Whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. I do not believe we have any remote electronic attendance. So we will move to our oath of office for promotional appointment of Chad Snook to fire captain, effective October 9, 2022. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I am once again very excited to stand up here and introduce to you a well-deserved individual receiving his promotion to captain tonight. In the Moline Fire Department, the captain serves not only as a shift commander, but also as the incident commander for all major incidents within the city. To say that this position holds a great deal of responsibility is putting it lightly, and we as an organization have the utmost respect for Lieutenant Snook and trust that he will do a great job for our department and the community in his new role. A little brief background of Chad. He was hired as a firefighter paramedic on August 28, 2001, appointed to engineer on July 28, 2014, and promoted to lieutenant on November 17, 2017. On July 22, 2019, he was appointed to the position of training officer, where he has served as the department's training officer very well. And effective October 8, 2022, he will assume the rank of captain. So it's my pleasure, Mayor Ray Putty and members of council, to introduce to you Captain Chad Snook.
And if you would just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chad Snook.
I, Chad Snook.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of captain.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of captain.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Moline.
And the City of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of captain of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of captain of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, everyone. We next have public comment. Is there anyone for public comment this evening? Okay, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Connie Kornmesser, and I reside here in the City of Moline. I am here on behalf of being a citizen of Moline and also for the Illinois License Beverage Association. At your last meeting, I would please beg you to review and clarify some of the issues within Chapter 4. There seems to be a lot of uncertainty of how the actual new ordinance revisions were made and how the clarification is going forward. This is causing issues with licensings, actually fear of possibly not having a license and going forward with a business, or continue to operate the way that they always have been. I believe at this time that our businesses through COVID have really taken a huge hit. This affects all of us in the community. When we take a hit, you take a hit. By removing gaming revenue from certain classifications of licenses, that also removes revenue. I would like to know what your further goal is in going forward with this loss of revenue and how you intend to replace that revenue. So at this time, please, I would like council to review Chapter 4 in its entirety and clear up some of the issues of misclarification that we have at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this evening?
My name is Christine Green. Some of you have met me, some of you have not. I am the third generation at Lessin Molly's Tavern from Lessin Molly Brown that opened in 1976. I am also asking that you revise and reevaluate Chapter 4. There is a lot of miscommunication in the verbiage and the numbers that have been construed to the rest of us. I have heard of 30% to 70%, I have heard of 50% to 50%, I have heard of gross to a net. There is no clear language when it comes to the actual ordinance that was put forth for Chapter 4. So if we could clarify and kind of look at that. We have been in the community a long time. We have given back to the community. We're not just a tavern that has gaming. I am not in danger in any way at this time, but there is not to say that there wouldn't be, because sometimes people come in just to game, not necessarily to drink. I am not the person to promote overconsumption by making you drink to game in my establishment. We have given back to the community in many ways, whether it's been shop with a cop, whether it's been Toys for Tots, whether it's been Winnie's Place was a shelter here in Moline for women and children in emergency situations. So to understand and clarify where Chapter 4 is at and what the language is and the verbiage is and be on the same page would be a wonderful additive to all of us and understanding where our licenses are standing. So that way, we are not all in fear of losing our business when it comes down to the sundown or whatever you guys call it for the class K license from the B, because at this point, it is not a very understanding thing. You talk to three people, you get three different languages. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment this evening?
What is the purpose of trying to renegate the... Why is this motivated? What is the purpose?
Public comment is for you to share your ideas and thoughts with us. If you want to call or email, leave an email for us. That's what we can do.
But then question, like, why is it... So, you know, it's taking away from business owners. I'm just trying to see, what is the motivation?
Can I get your names so we can follow up with you?
Yes, my name is Robert Rabitzer. Robert Rabitzer, 415 15th Street, Beer Stewby, Broken Saddle.
Thank you. If there's nothing else you want to add, I'll be sure to follow up.
It's more a question, that's all.
I understand.
So, yeah, yeah. I'm not trying to put pressure on people, but I don't see what the motivation is, though.
Understood.
It's a question, so.
Right, and clearly, there's some clarity that can be added, so we will follow up with everyone who's spoken today.
I'd love it. It'd be fantastic, really.
Thank you.
And I respect you guys. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any further public comment? Okay, hearing none. Oh, sorry. Didn't see you getting up.
Jeff McAusso with Suzie's. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife. I know we got three minutes, so I'm not going to be that long, but we're all license holders here. I mean, we're all self-employed people. I think I looked at some of the bios and some of you folks, some are self-employed, many of you work for someone. I've been on both sides. I've worked for some before. It's comfortable. Your insurance provided, you get a paycheck. On this side of the fence, which we all choose to be, we don't have that luxury. So we're building businesses, we're trying to make our payments, we're trying to make a lives for ourselves. This program started in '09, implemented in '12. From '12 until about the pandemic, everything seemed to be fine in the City of Moline. I mean, the machines were running, places made money, the city made money, the state made money. Suddenly, something changed, and I think it was the change of the council. So now we've become these eel business owners that are taking money from people that should know better. Well, that's not our job, and I don't think it's the council's job to implement that as well. So my biggest thing is, these folks are building a lives for themselves, and at some point, like all of you, you want to retire. So how are you going to sell a business when this council won't allow someone to present it to another individual saying, "Here's my business, here's what I've done, but I'm not sure what the council's going to rule next year"? So who's going to buy that? And I think that's the biggest dilemma, is we're working as hard as we can to keep our doors open, to pay our people, we've got leases in place, some of us have purchased our buildings. I mean, these are real businesses. These aren't little hobby businesses. We're committed to a lot of things. And to read what was on the ordinance, now there's going to be 17 of us possibly within a couple of years that are gone. So I think these are real people, real lives, and this is what we're up against. So I hope you take that in consideration. These are individuals, not puppets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay. We will move to questions on the agenda. One clarifying comment is that the minutes from last Tuesday will be approved at the next council meeting, and we're not able to be completed, so. Moving on from there, we have no other council agenda items, so we move to our informationals. Mr. Messias.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Do we have a document that needs to be pulled up?
Yes, we have a PowerPoint.
Thank you, Your Honor, and my fellow members of the City Council, residents, and all the staff. Today, I'm going to talk a little bit about municipal ID programs. This is merely informational. I've had conversations with some staff, some of you, people in the community, and now I feel it's time that we need to have this discussion at a broader sense. Also, my involvement in the community. From one of my community partners, I heard that there's a push to also get something going across the river with this, so I think it's timely that we take a look at municipal IDs. So first, what are these programs? They're basically identifications for residents. This affects minors, immigrants, refugees, people who are experiencing homelessness, and low and moderate income people who can't afford $30 for a state ID. There are actually people that it's a pain for them to spend that kind of money, and if they don't drive, it's also hard for them to get to the DMV. So it affects a lot more than what we think of. We sometimes take these things for granted. But what these can be used for is to open up bank accounts for individuals, confirm your identity when using a credit card, getting medications at a pharmacy, for leases, utilities, to obtain a library card, which we're in that business of utilities and library cards, even to return an item at a store, you have to have an ID. And so the last couple are bigger ones, where interactions with our law enforcement, with some communities who might be undocumented, it might be an issue. They will not report some serious crimes just because they don't have the right documentation. But it also helps with the interactions at schools, hospitals, and civic and community organizations. Now, let's touch briefly on what it cannot be used for. There's a list proving employment eligibility, voting, boarding a plane, purchasing alcohol, tobacco, entering establishments with age restrictions, and it does not substitute for a driver's license. That's what it is not. So there are some benefits for the City of Moline. First of all, for first responders, they can quickly identify individuals, whether it's a medical emergency or encounters with law enforcement. It actually works with community partners. So if we're referring people to agencies and social services organizations that might want some identification, it could also help in that sense. The other big thing is building trust. So within governmental agencies, obviously, there's always some mistrust, and this is one of those tools that really is able to address the needs of the most marginalized people in our communities and really builds trust. And it also signals that we are a welcoming and inclusive city. These things have been around for some time, and I'm going to give some examples of communities that have implemented these programs. But first, we'll look at how is it that they make sure that, you know, this is something that's of a high standard and there's some very rigorous requirements to get these IDs. So there's a list. I'm not going to read all of them, but there's a long list, actually, it's two pages long, of the number of IDs or documents that could be used to prove your identity. There's also a list of the items that can prove the residency that I provided in the letter that was to the Scott County Board of Supervisors that you all received ahead of time. So you see, there's a list of all these documents that everybody in here probably has a majority of them. But the reality is there are people in Moline that maybe have one, maybe two of these documents. If they lose them, it could be a real pain for them to get another ID. Again, just even exchange something at the store. So again, we take this for granted, but there are people who really only have one, maybe two of these documents. So it's a real help for those who need something for some of the basic necessities. So I'll get into a couple of examples that are out there from some of our neighbors in the Midwest. First, Johnson County, in 2015, they implemented their program as a countywide ID. This is used in some banks and credit unions in the area, and they actually use it as a secondary ID. I believe one credit union uses it as a primary ID as well. They offer discounts to local businesses, so they have a list on their website of restaurants and other places that offer special deals with it. And if you look on the back of the card, you can also put if there's any known allergies as well. So it can be used for emergency first responders as well. Oh, and I do, I'm going to go back. This card, they implemented in 2015, they charge $8 for an adult to get this card. For minors, it's only $4. So you can see it's a lot more affordable, and it serves a bigger purpose than just a state ID. Now, we look at Chicago. Obviously, a much bigger city. They've been doing this for a very long time. As I was researching some of these, this is like the Swiss Army knife of municipal ID cards. It serves as a library card, transit card, so you can put value, you can put credits into it to ride the public transit system. And they have a lot of benefits for institutions like museums, you can go to the Sioux, even games for like the Chicago Fire, Chicago Sky, and restaurants give discounts as well. Navy Pier gives about, I believe it's 20% off to go to Navy Pier. And banks and credit unions also accept it in the Chicagoland area. So you can also see it's got a little scan code there. It mentions if you have allergies, and they went above and beyond in, you can mention if you're a donor as well. So again, this one is to a degree that really encompasses a lot for the City of Chicago. And obviously, we're not Chicago. They provide it for free, so they did allocate a lot of resources to this, to provide this free service. But in an effort to provide a service for the marginalized communities, they realized that this is something that spurs economic development by involving businesses and all these other amenities that get discounts and get frequent customers at their doors. So that, again, to me, is like probably one of the highest standards of a municipal ID card. So while originally, we're between Chicago and Johnson City geographically, I think we could come to something in the middle, kind of in the middle, where, you know, we could have some of those great benefits, but also the main purpose is to address the needs of those who are in the margins of our city and our region. By simply having your picture on an official government document, to some people, it signifies that they are recognized, they're acknowledged, that they exist. So participants in this will be more involved in the economic, in our local economy and the social life of the city. And I'll leave you by a quote there from QC Interfaith, who, they gather a lot of this information, and I personally have known about these ID cards for many years, and I've seen how they've evolved in certain cities. But really, they mentioned that by doing something like this, we are providing a basic right that many take for granted, a right to an identity. And that really will mean a lot to some people. For us, we might take it for granted, but for somebody in the margins of our community, it will mean a lot. Now that said, at this point, I do have some ideas that I can share, and I could encourage staff to look around their departments and think of ways that a program like this would be a benefit to your department and those that you serve and those that you work with. And at this moment, I will thank you for your time, and I'll open it up for questions. I do have some friends from QC Interfaith that can also help answer any questions, probably a little better than I can. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Messias, council. Mr. Timian?
Two questions. One is, the examples you gave outside of Chicago, which is a mini-country, are county-based. Do you think there's any appetite to do this on a county level versus city, pros and cons? And then I'll just ask my second question really fast. Partnering with the prison to maybe get IDs at time of discharge? Have you seen examples of that? Because I think it's really, recently discharged inmates can't get jobs because they don't have IDs. And so I think if maybe they're residents of Moline, you know, helping them get that one step up.
Thank you, Alderman. Yes, first or second question? Yes, there is a, in the informational letter that I provided, there's a point there that it does help returning residents having an ID, because it can be a challenge for those. So you could even, they suggest using discharge papers, which I don't know what they look like, but it's some of those papers to help them get the ID. So yes, and back to your first question?
County.
County. I actually hope that the county is listening and sees this so that we could make a bigger impact. But the reality is, we have a council here, Moline's the biggest city in the county, and I think we could really, you know, take that big first step, and we should. So, but I am providing this as informational so that we can all bring ideas. Maybe somebody else knows something about the county, or there could be people who are in the county that could say, "Hey, this is something that we should do bigger." I'm open to any of those suggestions, and again, looking to hear, get some feedback.
Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. And we talked about this earlier today, and that was my first thing that I brought up. You know, I mean, we've got Rock Island, East Moline. If we wind up with a situation where there was an East Moline card, and a Moline card, and a Rock Island card, and a, you know, Silvis card, I think that the confusion would outweigh the benefits of what was going on. So in theory, I don't have any problem with this at all. I would like to see, because as we discussed over in Scott County, it's a proposal that's being floated, hasn't been even presented, I don't think, to the county. They've presented a document saying, "Hey, we'd like you to do this", but not a discussion or votes or anything like that. And so I think working on this side of the river and then talking with that side to, if we're going to do this so that there's some, I guess, commonality of what the requirements are or everything, because like you said, I mean, I think there's only one bank in this area who's really out of Iowa City, who's Johnson County, but that accepts these, that we would want to have some commonality. So if you didn't wind up with the situation where somebody could use the ID card in an Iowa bank, but then you bring it over here, they're like, "Oh, well, those Iowa ones, they don't hit the same requirement that the Rock Island County ones have", and so I think that we really need to work on that. Two just points of clarification. It is $30 for a driver's license, but for a minor, it's only $5 for an ID card, and it's $20 for an adult. If you're over 65, it's free. If you're handicapped, it's free. If you're homeless, it's free for a state ID card. Just want to make sure that that information is out there. But if we're going to move forward with this, this has to be a regional approach. Otherwise, we wind up with holes and conflicts.
I'll follow up with that. I've talked to Mr. Messias and suggested that a lot of community engagement has to go on before any of this would come back in a more formal form, because those marginalized groups that you talked about, they need to understand it and see if they agree with it and they want it, et cetera, et cetera. As you mentioned, staff needs to weigh in. I know you've talked with some staff already. But all those other connections that need to be made, I guess I just want to assure the council that that engagement piece is something I think he plans on heading up after this introduction.
Yes, and really, as far as timeliness with the... I'm always looking for parity between here and the region. And if, and as far as across the river in Scott County, they've been presented this information, but they're waiting till the end of November. There's also something happening at the beginning of November, so they're waiting till the end of November to look at it collectively. So it could be that. So I think the timeliness, it's there.
Mr. Schmidt?
One of the things I looked at when we talk about the approach is, what I would like to see in a program that was rolled out would really be understanding that... I mean, money is one piece of that challenging of getting the ID, but also the time and the actual documents. There are people who have lost their documents, who don't have first certificates, right? That is, you know, one of the reasons that I've long been an opponent to a voter ID that does not provide some sort of alternative solution is because they don't... There is a segment of our population that has difficulty getting an ID for reasons that are not of their own making or of their own fault, and I think this is something that could help address that. And many of those people may be people whom our agencies have to interact with on a regular basis. And an ID could help to shorten that engagement process. And so I think if we did do that, I would want to have an opportunity where certain agencies who maybe would start to rely on that, including our own police department, if they had recommendations to, "Hey, we think this person is neat, we'd like to see them get that ID" and waiving fees and helping them through that process, because I think that's where it could really make the biggest impact, is to people who are currently using those services but routinely run into those problems. So that's just something that, as a thought of working with the partner agencies who would be relying on that to help find opportunities for either getting them funded to have a certain amount number done, or an opportunity for those organizations to speak up and say, "We'd like you to help us get this person one".
And I think there could be, I believe, central Iowa, there's an organization that created their own IDs, not by a municipality or a governing body, but they did it with a grant. So I'm sure there could be either partners that this fits in their line of work that could assist with some of that, or there could possibly be some grants out there that we could tap into. So again, we still have to do some due diligence. I wanted to get a conversation going and get this information out.
I think it's a great idea. As a former county board member, I think it's an excellent job opportunity for either the county clerk or the recorder of deeds to do this, and they wouldn't be mad about the income they get from it, just, you know, putting that out there. And I think it's a good idea to at least approach the county board first and see, you know... I mean, I think it's a good idea. I don't see why they would. I mean, they might. If it doesn't work, then we'll bring it back here. But I think we should try and have a dialogue with the county board and see what they come up with.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you. And actually, my thought process with this and one of the ideas is if it's house somewhere that is open beyond 9 to 5. And unfortunately, City Hall or the clerk's office, they close at 5:00 or 4:30 sometimes. So again, providing that accessibility. So I have some ideas that could make that work.
Mr. Schmidt?
When even with the county program, there's no reason we couldn't continue to partner and help provide, you know, if that's through the library, we're already doing passports. If there's another, you know, just because if we try and have that happen, doesn't mean we can't still be involved. I think that's a great way we could.
Exactly. Thank you.
I just wanted to point out... I just wanted to point out, for Mr. Vitas and Mr. DeKaisen, the objective in the strategic plan, this is related to because we don't want to be getting far off of that track, right? With our energies and our staff energies, I found objective 2.5, build stakeholder partnerships.
They would fall into that category and I'm happy to reach out to Mr. Grafton.
Don't worry, I found some for you too as well.
I was gonna say. We can have meetings. I'll set it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Also, speaking to our core values listed in the strategic plan, welcome and inclusion and stewardship.
Yes, welcoming alone. In fact, when I was talking to one staff, he moved to the area and he had a hard time setting things up because he didn't have an ID. And I don't know if he lost it or whatnot, but just anybody could benefit from something like this, just having that extra additional ID.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further, please follow up with the email with Mr. Masias.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, 7.2, Illinois 92 TIF, Mr. Waldron and Mr. Went. I also will point out this objective 3.2, review TIF development opportunities and 3.4, I-92 corridor development plan. There's some attachment to those.
I think I'll just talk from here. So this is something that we've been talking about for a very long time. What unfortunately winds up happening is we talk about a lot of things, we put them on the board and say that these are goals and then we don't actually do actions to move it forward. 92 is a, well, let's take a step back. TIFs, the purpose for TIFs as they were created originally were to assist blighted areas, areas of disinvestment, lower investment, places that through this economic development tool could spur development. The increment that would happen by the increased values of the properties within that corridor or property could then help pay for the projects and the development within that. 92 is a, kind of is at a nexus right now. There was recently a state project from Rock Island to East Moline on redeveloping 92 as a state highway, changing some of its course along the way. That is, we think, in engineering with the state right now. But because of that and because there is going to be some state investment in it, hopefully in the near future, this seems to be the perfect time to discuss putting some sort of TIF in this area. It's also coupled with, we have the flood mitigation project that is coming up, which would certainly be TIF eligible if we did this. There's some, a number of buildings and parcels down there that are not the highest and best use for them, Fear Factory and those sorts of things. And we've had discussions about property acquisitions and different things in this area. So I felt that it was time for us to, as a council, have a conversation about it, what the scope, what we might like to see and get feedback from the council so that we can then give specific direction to staff on what we want to see rather than just, oh, 92, we'd like to do something. So I figure let's spur the conversation.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
No. I would reiterate what Alderman Went has said, what Alderman Waldron said at the last meeting. I don't know how many people remember when downtown, before the TIF. That's exactly the best use of a TIF is what we did with our downtown. No question about it. Probably the most successful TIF in the area. That's exactly what TIFs were meant for, were blighted areas. And we have a blighted area on the east end of town. I think, you know, Renew Moline and the other entities that work with TIF, the current TIFs we have now, need some extra tools to be able to attract developers. Because right now, I don't think we've got a whole lot of people interested in that section of Illinois 92. It's very blighted, as you all know, you've all driven through there. And it is a gateway to our city. We need the development, you know, we're talking about annexing here and there. We need to develop what we have, the property we already have control of. And a TIF is really our best instrument for doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
I'm curious to know, obviously, Illinois 92 is a very, very long stretch. Would it be advantageous, because it intersects with some existing TIFs currently, would we want to do a TIF along the whole thing or just pretty much like I-74 East, which seems to be the most affected?
Mr. Vitas?
I'm happy to jump in if you want me to.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think the challenge that we have is unlike the downtown, you know, the downtown was a smaller area, right?
What, 10th Street to 9th?
When you basically look from the old bridge to the Seating Company and what happened along that portion of the riverfront, you know, this is over two miles. So this is really, you know, the question that you have to do is ask, you know, are you looking at a corridor TIF? Not all of it. You know, if you look at the Riverside Park area, you know, on the one direction, I think that would be the Eastbound Lane, that's not necessarily problematic. I mean, there may be some road alignments there that you mentioned IDOT was looking at. And that's a possibility too, to reduce the one ways, that's what they're looking at. So we'd have to look at that plan, we'd have to take a look at the comprehensive plan because obviously it's probably called out in there. There's probably information that we can benefit from in that document. But then you get into the issue of, you know, when you're trying to identify this area, because it's one of the steps, it's one of the requirements. So you're looking at property values, right? And that really what, in a lot of respects, drives what gets included into a TIF, is where you see falling property values, values or stagnated property values, or you see reinvestment no longer happening at, on a parcel-by-parcel basis. It just starts to fall. So, you know, I can't sit here and say that it should be the whole length because I think it has to be studied. I know I had asked the CED director, there you are, Ryan, you know, I had asked him probably a couple, two weeks ago maybe, and I know he's busy, so we're just piling hires, is what I'm doing. And I have to respect the time that they have, but, you know, to start to identify along the entire length of the corridor, those properties, you know, that are truly blighted, that are no longer contributing to the city, you know, or to the neighborhood, more importantly, because people reside there. So, and we have industries there like PAR, Instruments, that are seriously interested in expanding, you know, and it begs the question, do they expand there or do they expand elsewhere? And that's the challenge that we, you know, on the ED side of the house are faced with every time we meet with them. So, you know, I think as we look at the whole length of the corridor, you have areas that literally could be project TIFs as opposed to the whole two miles, you know, east, immediately east of the new bridge, right? You know, that area is a primary development area, it's a part of the old downtown, but it's the remnant part of the downtown that really did not see redevelopment, you know, and yet that's where the skate park discussions are and some of the other things. So, you know, you can carve out an area very specifically there and make a project TIF. As you'll remember, when we were doing all this TIF work last year, you know, Mike Weber made it pretty clear, you know, project TIFs prove to be very successful as opposed to area-wide TIFs. And I believe that because I've had bad experiences where there are area-wide TIFs and project TIFs usually take off and there's usually development money and city money and then the project gets done. So we could probably segment this and have multiple TIFs along the corridor, would be my suggestion.
I would, I see your hand. Just ask for a little follow-up as well, where the work on I-92, the objective I mentioned lands in the three-year plan, right? Because we have to be careful to make sure we're aligning staff, time and projects like we've talked about the comprehensive plan and a downtown master plan, et cetera. And if we add another project that's not lining up chronologically, right, then we don't get anything done because things start to slow down. So my concern, I just want to register is, not that I'm against any of these ideas, but that we need to work with staff or staff needs to have the time to align the projects so they can actually get completed rather than just a pile that they are trying to shove and nothing's, nothing's coming off that pile. Mr. Went?
And I appreciate the conversation regarding a project-specific TIF versus a long sprawling I don't disagree that when you've got a specific, one project, here's the parcel, you can do it, that does make sense. And in larger communities and those sorts of things, that makes a whole lot more sense. In a community like we see in Moline, having, and I'm not saying you should TIF the entire time, you know, but the, you look at TIF number 13, that certainly was not a single project TIF, you know? Right off the bat, it had three that went up pretty quick and now it is going to spin off $9 million of projected surplus. That money then can be used to do other public projects and help other developments and those sorts of things in those areas. So there is some advantage to having multiple project TIFs, or projects in one particular TIF. I mean, and to the point about this, some of this is time-sensitive. You mentioned PAR. They've been in the community for a very long time, they are a great resource and an amazing company who's headquartered here in Moline. And I would love nothing better to keep them here. And I want to make sure that our, that this council communicates to our economic development department that this is a tool that you have in your quiver, that we will absolutely approve to make those things happen, to have them stay, to increase, to fix flooding and those sorts of things. But in that particular area, there are some other buildings and pieces of property that it would then also make sense because of their proximity to include as well, especially since we have this ridiculous policy that we're not going to allow TIF transfers. But to your point about, like Riverside, yeah, it's not blighted, but it certainly is a public project that if you wind up then having a TIF that is spinning off access after the project is done, because oftentimes the payback is done prior to the TIF expiring, you could use that to better your parks. East End Park, Riverside, those sorts of things, you need to take into account. I think historically, we've had some carve-outs where we're like, God, I wish we would have just spread, made it not so specific. If we would have done TIF 12 and jumped over and included Riverside into that, the additional money that is coming in there, if we can't use it to move Midland Davis, that could have been used to help with the pool and the parking lot that we don't have money for right now. So we have to be very specific and very strategic when we're talking about this, not to say, oh, a book says, or this one person says, TIF-specific, because oftentimes, having a broader view in a community like ours makes a whole lot more sense.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
I agree with Alderman Went. I think with the, what's the old quote, if you want to eat an elephant, it's one bite at a time? I think we can move forward with this and I think we could be willing to give staff the time that they need to do this. But speaking, I guess on behalf of myself, I'd like to see some type of attention put into putting in, looking at these various areas for these targeted TIFs, whether it be PAR, whether it be, you know, some of those other properties that I, we've all talked about aside, not going to talk about them, I guess, in public here, but we know what they are. And if we, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to look into these, what would the term be, the sectional TIFs? I mean, we're not, you know...
Like a phased group?
Phased-in TIF. And we're willing to, I mean, I'm willing to give staff time, but I want to get the ball rolling, I want to get the process started into looking into TIFs for that end of town. And I think we need to, East End of the Bridge is fine, but we need to start at 55th Street and work back this way, in my opinion.
Can I just clarify, if motions are allowed, or we can get a consensus like we do on many other informational's that the majority of the council wants to go that direction?
Correct. The latter.
Okay. Can I get consensus from the council on moving forward? All right, that's unanimous? So you've got that, we'll ask that. I would just ask the council to keep in mind that big, huge group of projects that we talked about last week, the chronology of some of those, and as we talk budget, et cetera, what are we willing to come off or push to a later date because we want to move this up in urgency? So just keep that in mind. Yes, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, and as we're looking at that, I think, I would like to understand what, where the recommendation is for how we build into that, how we come to these. I agree, we should absolutely make sure that the TIFs are landing in a larger area. I guess my bigger concern about ensuring that we do seek out some projects and kind of build them that way, is what I don't want to see is a TIF get started and then no action takes, the clock is ticking. Like, that's, when I think about the project component to a TIF, that's my bigger concern is that we lay all the groundwork, we get right up to the edge there, but then we have to find that project and that partner to make sure we can jump in and then they have the full benefit. Because that's what's going to make sure that when we build in that extra space, we have the way to spend the extra money to have the extra benefits. But I think it is, it's a, it's a long process and I don't want to see us waiting to kind of start heading in that direction. And especially as CED is getting up to speed, I do think it's appropriate to kind of move this up and we may have to move some other priorities back to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vitas?
Okay. Very good. I got the message. I think one of the things I want to mention though is, if we're going to, when we do proceed, you know, defining the project area, obviously that's with the redevelopment plan in mind. So our comprehensive plan maybe speaks to some of what the future of that area was. And I have to rely on the 2020, 2001 plan because that's the only one we have right now. So Ryan and I will sit down and we'll look at that. You know, juggling some of the projects' priorities needs to happen. I appreciate your comment, Alderman Schmidt, because that may be required because of the workload and the staffing levels that we have. And then also possibly coming to you for approval for financial resources to bring on someone to assist the planning and community economic development department to actually effectuate this project, to make it move quicker. Because I think internally, if we were to do it just internally, I don't think we're going to be able to push it fast enough for people's likings. So we may reach out to not only a, you know, I think we have a list of five or six different firms that are already pre-approved and we would certainly want to speak with them and find out what their availability is and their interest in working with us. But I think we used PGAV planners now for over 32 years. They would certainly be on the list that I would look at, but there are others here in Illinois that we could turn to who do excellent work in this regard and could, you know, bring great ideas to the table and couple those with our comprehensive plan.
Great. Let's move to 7.3, Utilities Working Group. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, I wanted to just kind of briefly update you on where we're at. Alderman Went had provided, after a discussion I had with them, a issue to be resolved, kind of a working paper. I think it's a working paper. I wouldn't call it a white paper, but it's a working paper. But it really speaks to, it speaks to a lot of issues. I know I have not gotten a lot of feedback, if any, and that's fine. I understand we've really, you know, discussed this, you know, at length for many, many months now. So a lot of the issues that are here relate to issues that are, require clarification, for example, in Chapter 6. We, in the process of working with Metronet and negotiating the broadband agreement, got to a point where we started to define what is the difference between a maintenance item versus a construction item. Because they want to make sure as they go forward, that's all clear, because it's really not, you know, and everybody has a different opinion. That's one of the purposes for this working group, is to sit down, gain a clear understanding of... a clear understanding of where the power company is at, the other utility companies, as well as our telecom providers, and find out where they're at on, on our ordinance and, and to help us clarify some things from their side of the table, as the industry that provides this service, but then understand what our goals are long-term. So as we look at, for example, and I think David's online, I know he's online, he's not in the room, but his experience, my own experience working in other communities, when, when you look at doing major road reconstruction, it is the ideal time to bury infrastructure. I mean, it's absolutely the time that it's done. You did it in TIF 1. Not everywhere where there's super high voltage lines, but in TIF 1 predominantly, they, you know, a lot of the cables got, a lot of the wires and cables got buried. You know, if you look over at Stony Creek, for example, you know, there was about a million dollars in undergrounding that happened over there, just in that one little area. So we're looking for clarity from their perspective, recognizing that they need to respect our ultimate goal, which is to start to do exactly that, you know, remove a lot of the conflicting holes, remove some of the conflicting wires, to understand the difference between construction and maintenance. I mean, right now, today, I can tell you that I have multiple care providers, including MediaCom, Metronet and others, who are just on hold. I mean, there's no permits being issued since June, you know, nothing is happening. And, and I think that's problematic for us. They really want an answer that they can go forward. And, and I want to be able to give them an answer, you know, in terms of what we, what they can and can't do in a right of way while we deal with our ordinance, while we deal with the working group, while we deal with our negotiations. There's a lot of moving parts to this. And, you know, if there's other input that the council wants to provide tonight or by email, that's great. The first meeting of the working group is already set for this Thursday morning. They're all coming. I mean, they are all excited to be there. They are all, all coming to the meeting, you know, and that will be kind of our preliminary meeting to review the ordinance and to review, you know, the working paper, to get a better understanding of where they're at so that we can see the light at the end of the tunnel and come up with a product that this council would be happy to accept, because it, it provides what they need, but provides what we want. And I think that's at needs and wants maybe a little bit different. So that's what, that's why we're, that's why I suggested the working group, and I'm glad that they're all willing to participate. So looking forward to those meetings and discussions. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Schmidt and then Mr. Went.
Thank you. As we look toward the working group and, and the, the list we've seen before, I, I'm fairly comfortable starting with the list we have and then understanding what is, what is, what is actually going to be work and be functional. I think that what we had had going was obviously not a functional way to do it, of having our code be one thing and what was being enacted be another. But I also think that with the challenges we face with every company being unable to come in, potentially repair service if it goes out to residents, and not be able to serve the community, that we might need to revisit the possibility that portions of what we have in our code are unrealistic as well. And I think that, I just want to stress my preference that the working group must operate from a give and take mentality, too. There are certain things we need to make sure we're doing, and I think double poles is a great example, and, and how we can set up something to be able to ensure that the work is being completed appropriately. I think those are all the places that need the biggest area of focus, but also recognizing that we need, I think we need to use this opportunity to make better working partners of the people who are not going to go away. And the longer we make this hard for them, the less quality of service is going to be received by our residents. And I just think we have to balance those things. Balance the aesthetics, the safety obviously must take priority, but balancing our aesthetics, balancing what we want to see with what is going to be necessary to actually serve our community. So that's just the message I would say sending into, to the working group, as far as my perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I am glad that the working group has a date to, to meet, and I'm looking forward to, because I think you said in November, we would get a report back with-
I want to get it done quickly.
And I appreciate that. I, to, to that point, want to work with them, absolutely. But we have to remember, from, from their perspective, our code right now is awesome because they can basically, or historically, can do whatever they want to do. I mean, I, I gave three examples here of issues that have been outstanding since June, couple of months. One is the brand new bike path up from Wilson to the Y. It's marked as completed in our, our packet that we, we, we got from the city administrator, but you can see, I took this picture last night, there's still barricades. I sent my first email in June about this issue, about wires on a secondary pole, the guy wire from the secondary pole crosses over this. And like I said, that's been, since June, they've been aware of it. We have not, because we have nothing in our code that has any teeth that requires anybody to move anything. And so that has been there that long. The next one we all saw is the wire going through the, the actual stoplight over on First. Again, that's been here for a couple of months, and I know that our staff has been working on it, but again, we've got no teeth. We can tell them, you've got to move it, and if they just tell us to pound sand, then so be it. The, the last right here is just wires that have been sitting on this private property for three months, I think as of today, possibly. And it just hasn't moved. No accountability, anything. That, that, that person is trying to sell that building. That's not a really good look for, trying to sell it, and there's, just wires just look like they're abandoned outside. You talk about secondary poles. I, I decided to take some pictures driving from my house to here, and I took 11 pictures of double poles between my house and here. We, we just kind of get, I think, sign blindness to it. They are prevalent without, within our community. And so we need to have things that are ordinance that allows our staff to have the teeth that they need. Absolutely work with them. It's not going to get done overnight. We got to give timeframes and, and work through that process. But our residents deserve better. Last summer, summer before last, when we had sidewalks all over Ward 2 that were just torn up and were filled with rock for months on end, not acceptable. Just having a bond is not going to do it. They have to meet our code, which means that they've got to do it within 10 days. But if they don't, right now, it's like, well, if you don't do it, hmm, there has to be fines or some kind of tool that our staff can use to enforce and make sure they do it. So I guess for consensus, I'm looking for this list of items. My original list was much longer. I met with David, having talked with you guys. I think that these are all absolutely workable, most communities that are mature and have thought about this, have updated with these items in, in mind. And so I'm hoping that we get consensus that this list will get addressed and be brought to us back in November with solutions.
Are there any further comments before I ask for consensus and then move to our next item? Okay.
Am I supposed to have a list, or is it just a list you spoke?
It was this one.
It's really this document that was handed out last week.
He had emailed it, I think it's in the-
Yep.
Looks like I can take that one tomorrow. I had emailed it out to you guys a few weeks ago.
I have more than one. Yeah, I think one of the, one of the big difficulties we're facing right now is, is that I know Metronet, I mean, we are negotiating with them, and we're waiting just simply now for a red line draft of the agreement to come back, just so the council's aware of it. But one of the problems, of course, is that they're still looking to light up four or five different municipalities based on the eight poles that never got strung since June. And I did get another request. I get repeated requests, you know? You know, they tried to get a waiver, you know, we tabled it. You know, it's, it's just a situation that, you know, it's awkward because we're trying to negotiate with them and that the same token, allow them to finish their project here in the city. I have the same problem with MediaCom. MediaCom had ordered spools of, of fiber that they were going to install to existing Moline customers. And those, those permits have not been really, there's been no permitting. So, you know, it's another problem area that we have, is that they're trying to upgrade, upgrade their system and replace cable with fiber. So it becomes a question, is that new construction, or is that simply replacement? So, and it's difficult to answer that because of the way the code is written. And I'm looking for clarity. So, you know, some guidance from council on issues like that would be really beneficial as well. You know, it might, it might help to advance our discussions with, with them on Thursday.
Mr. Went.
Well, in the interim, I mean, and this is something I've probably said 15 times on this council floor. If there is anything where the staff has something in the code that is not workable or needs to be changed-
Yeah.
Make a recommendation, bring it back to us and let us have the conversation. And maybe we'll say, hey, come back and, and rework it. Maybe we'll say, do it. Or maybe we'll say, no, we like it the way that it is. But you guys are the ones that are doing this. You're running in and knowing where the bottlenecks are, where the things in the ordinance aren't working and, and are working. If something's not working, come, come and let us know and let's change it. What we don't want is, oh, something's not working, so we'll just ignore it completely and we'll do something completely different. So if, if you've got things like that, come and let us know. We'll, I'm all open for, for making reasonable accommodations to, to make this work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Need to grab consensus then from everyone on this list? Thumbs up? Yeah. Mr. O'Brien? Okay, thank you. Have a good conversation on Thursday.
Looking forward to it.
All right. And we turn to you as well for 7.4, October Status and Information Report.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As you know, back in January, we started out with a new action plan and a performance dashboard. And as we continue to move through this fiscal year, this is the third quarterly report dated October 22, across all departments, dealing very specifically with our strategic, strategic plan and all of the actions that have been ongoing during the last quarter of the current fiscal year. The next report will be released in January, which will be a summary, basically a report, a year-end report. And it's my intention at that time to present that publicly in great detail in terms of the accomplishments that the, the city, through the council, and the mayor, my office, and through the directors and the staff, what had, what was achieved in terms of delivering on the first year of a three-year strategic plan that was adopted by council and funded in the budget for the current year. So if there's questions, I know Alderman Went had questions. We are circulating those through the organization to get responses. I will share those with you by the end of the week, once I have all the responses back from the staff. And other than that, I didn't have any other questions. So if there are any, I'm more than happy to provide responses to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hearing no questions, we'll move to 7.5, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 5: Amusements. The Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 5 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Chapter 5 dealing with the same subject matter. Ms. Kostopoulos.
Well, I am going to defer to our clerk, who really headed this project.
And I will say, in part to clarifying for some of our public comments, this is part of an ongoing process of code cleanup that the council adopted as part of the strategic plan. So that's where a lot of this is coming from, is simply a code cleanup and an attempt at enforcement where there had been none in the past.
Thank you, Your Honor. So as Mayor Iapetti said, this is per strategical 2.3F comprehensive review of the Code of Ordinances, and we have completed a review of nine chapters so far. This is the ninth. And then we're going to take a pause while we look at the budget for the rest of the year and pick back up in January. The bulk of the changes to Chapter 5 were really just to incorporate changes in Chapter 4. Mostly that was when we changed those classifications and the, the letters that were provided there. Alderman Went did raise some questions, and I would like to address some and get some consensus of council on another. The first is Section 5-1101(c)(2), and this was a change in January that allowed video gaming licenses to issue to current Class B taverns. And Alderman Went is suggesting that that be expanded to Class A restaurants and bowling alleys. Do we have consensus to, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that the idea is if, the question came up, if a new bar comes in town or, or something like that, and they wanted to make an application, they would go through, through this process. But as we've seen, you know, sometimes the blurring between a restaurant and a bar may be somewhat slight, or we'd have a number of restaurants that have gaming. I, I think that it should be opened up to, to that as well. If we're going to have B be able to make this application for a, a increase, I think it makes sense that A does as well.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I would support that, too. Makes sense to expand it like that, make it easier.
Mr. O'Brien?
So how would this, I guess, play out? I mean, most bowling alleys do have a, every bowling alley ever, but it has a designated area for a bar. Is that where the gaming machines would go, or are we telling them what to do with that, or?
You'd have to follow code. They can't be in the exact same spot.
Right. And currently, we have two bowling alleys, and they've been allowed to have gaming. What this is doing is, if there were any existing ones that did not get in at the time that we, before we put that ceiling of 30 on, it would allow them in. And we did have that happen. I think we had three bars who either didn't get in or made a decision afterwards that they wanted to get a video gaming license, so it would enable them to do so. So that one, probably, we're not going to see a change in that unless we have a new bowling alley that comes in. But we do have some restaurants, and there's one in particular that checks with me quite regularly to see if she can add gaming.
Okay, so on that particular item, do we have thumbs up and one thumbs down? All right, so when you take this back to write it up, the majority of the council would like to expand that to Class As and bowling alleys.
Thank you.
Yep. The second point that was a question was under Section 5-2103. Alderman Went asked, who would be the staff member that leads the inspections division of the Department of Planning and Development? And so, and this is at least semi-annually. So as we looked at this, our thought is that this was actually changed when inspections was supposed to be under the CED.
That's right.
Yes. And so that should be changed to Public Works. But that person is the environmental health specialist, Alex. So we'll change that before this comes back before you on the 18th. The third of five points was in Section 5-3104, who would be the staff member that leads the inspections division of the Department of Public Works, and that is the building official?
Perfect.
Yes.
So would that be different than, you said Alex would be the-
It is because the building official is actually her boss. So it is the inspections department that's doing all of these inspections.
Okay.
Yeah, there's alignment.
But she specifically looks when it, when it states fumigation, things like that, she specifically looks at that, and she does go out at least twice a year.
Perfect.
Under 5-3105 and 5-3106, there were a couple of questions about whether the million dollars of insurance was sufficient and some of the simple indemnity, indemnity provisions. Our risk management specialist is looking at that, and we will report back when this comes back before you. Are there any other questions on this? Yes.
Yeah, along those two, two lines, yeah, I'm sure like a million dollars maybe when this was originally written made, might have made sense, but with the litigious nature of society and everything, I, I don't know. So I appreciate them looking into it. And then the indemnity seems, I mean, you might have some fly-by-night carnival that comes into town, and we get an indemnity from the Shell Corp or LLC, you know, is there something that we need to, to make it a little bit more stronger?
Ms. Kostopoulos.
Or a bond or something?
Actually, the ordinance says owner, operator, manager. So we'll stick with that.
Personally?
Yes. And then I am looking into whether there is currently, you know, an indemnification agreement that they sign, or do we just rely on that couple of sentence? or do we just rely on that couple of sentences? So we'll get back to you on that.
And my other concern is, you know, if you just kind of put manager in, you know, you, you wind up having somebody who owns this carnival that sends them around, and you've got some twenty-five-year-old manager that winds up signing the thing. So we just want to make sure that, that, that we've got those things covered.
Does she have something else?
Yeah, the one, the, the last thing, I just want to make sure that, because I think it's, it's something that we want to make sure that we communicate properly, that's within the code, talking about advertising. There's, there's a number of things we have, years ago, we, we started to have this proliferation of gaming and driving billboards and all sorts of stuff that was, was happening in the community. And so at that time, we adopted this, this ordinance that over time reduced the amount of advertising as it pertains to gaming in, in our community. And there were some that took effect the day that we passed it. There was another set that started July first, two thousand nineteen, which, you know, you can't have any window signs in a licensed establishment advertising gambling, different things like that, which I, I know that they're happening out there. We're probably not enforcing it, it's probably something that we need to, to talk about. But the big thing is, as of January first, two thousand twenty-three, this goes into effect that for establishments with gaming, they're allowed one sign on their building advertising gaming, not multiple, but, but one, it has to meet the, the sign ordinance. And then for K establishments, they're allowed one sign that says the name of the, the company or doing as on the building, but no other advertising, no marquees, no other, other things. So that's coming up, I just think that it'd probably be good to make sure that that information is out there, communicated to them. So it's, it's not all of a sudden on January first, we start enforcing something they didn't know.
So that's a great segue to follow up on some public comment as well. I leaned to the clerk after public comment and said, we need to work on a letter or on an explanation. We can include this update, you know, this, this, this is coming. And, you know, the timing of all of these things with the renewal period has really complicated the messaging and the explanation. I'm trying to have Janine be the one-point person to, to explain things because that minimizes incorrect information, et cetera. So we will follow up with license holders with a proper explanation, and we'll include this as well. Does that make sense, Ms. Kostopoulos? Yes.
And I appreciate that immensely. I, I had an opportunity to talk with a number of liquor holders that, that called. I think that there was quite a bit of misinformation that was, was going around. And so I think that that would be really helpful to, to make sure that that's clear, because even some of the things that were said here, I, I don't comport with the, the facts, so.
Thank you. Any further feedback on Chapter Five for our legal counsel and our clerk? Hearing none, we will look for those updates to be brought back for passage going through our regular process. Any further public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll call our regular council meeting to order a pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Mr. Williams has an invocation.
Yes.
Thank you, change of pace for us.
You bow your heads, please. Lord, I simply ask that you guide this council with wisdom in your hand as we go forward representing our fellow neighbors. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Thirty-four Water and Sewers of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter Thirty-four in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new Chapter Thirty-four dealing with the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty thirty dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Ten Thereup, No Parking Here at Corner, by including Third Street on the East Side from Twelfth Avenue south for a distance of thirty feet. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven thirty-three dash twenty twenty-two are a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation memorandum of understanding between the City of Moline, City of Rock Island and County of Rock Island, setting forth the terms for submitting a joint application for funding and authorizing staff to do all things necessary to submit the subsequent grant application currently available through the U.S. Department of Justice, two thousand twenty-two Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. House Bill eleven fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation professional services agreement with FGM Architects Incorporated for Moline Central Fire Station that shall serve as a master agreement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation amendment number one to the professional services agreement with FGM Architects Incorporated for new central fire station phase one fire sector programming study and location analysis for the amount of ninety-six thousand four hundred dollars and an additional allowance of fifteen thousand for geotechnical borings if required. Council Bill eleven seventy dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution amending the City of Moline's facade improvement program guidelines. Council Bill eleven seventy-one dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing city staff to do all things necessary to implement the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-seven facade improvement program.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Not consent agenda resolutions. House Bill eleven seventy-two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to approve to an administrative services agreement by in between the City of Moline and Renew Moline Incorporated to operate the Moline Center Program.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, second by Alderman Williams, discussion. Mr. Went?
I had a quick question, and I apologize for not getting this in earlier. Has the general fund always been responsible for about twenty-five percent of this program? Is that?
I believe according to Tara Osborne, that has not changed.
I think that's correct, that number sounds familiar.
It wasn't always just the SSAs and?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Four nodding heads from staff and related, yes, Ms. Kostopoulos.
Thank you, and I believe that Alderman Moyer raised a very good point about a typo. Reference Section Nine should be a reference to Section Eight. So with council's approval, we'll amend accordingly.
Thank you. Any further commentary? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Three Thereup, pedestrian crossing signals by including mid-block on Forty-Eighth Street, two, six hundred and seventy-five feet south of Twelfth Avenue, mid-block on River Drive on the west side of the intersection of Forty-first Street, mid-block on River Drive, nine hundred and thirty-five feet east of Twenty-Fifth Street, mid-block on Fifty-third Street, one hundred and seventy-five feet north of Nineteenth Avenue, mid-block on Fifty-third Street, two hundred feet north of Thirty-sixth Avenue Court, and mid-block on Thirty-Fourth Avenue, one thousand eighty feet west of Seventh Street, East Moline. Council Bill thirty thirty-two dash twenty twenty-two, an order, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation ordinance, amending Chapter Thirty-four Water and Sewers of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Section thirty-four dash thirty-two hundred, sewerage rate system for repea, by repealing said sections in their entirety and acting in lieu thereof new sections thirty-four dash thirty-two hundred, dealing with the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty thirty-three dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Eight Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services, Article Seven, Division Three, Emergency Radio System Coverage. Council Bill thirty thirty-four dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging the corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a section, I'm sorry, a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as thirty-four fifty-four, Fourteenth Street, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five. And that is parcel number seventeen zero eight four zero one zero two five. Council Bill thirty thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging the corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as thirty-eight oh seven, Fifteenth Street D, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five, that's parcel number seventeen zero nine three zero four zero one two. Council Bill thirty thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging the corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as thirty-eight eleven, Fifteenth Street D, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five, parcel seventeen zero nine three zero four zero one three. Council Bill thirty thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as thirty-eight fourteen, Fifteenth Street C, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five, parcel seventeen zero eight four one three zero four zero. Council Bill thirty thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging the corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as thirty-eight thirty-six, Fifteenth Street C, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five, parcel one seven zero eight four one three zero four seven. Council Bill thirty thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging the corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as thirty-nine ten, Fifteenth Street, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five, parcel one seven one seven two zero five zero one seven. Council Bill thirty forty dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging the corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as thirty-nine twelve, Fifteenth Street C, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five, parcel one seven zero eight four one four zero two nine. Council Bill thirty forty-one dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance enlarging the corporate limits of the City of Moline by annexing thereto a certain parcel of land in Rock Island County, Illinois, commonly known as forty-one ten, Twenty-Ninth Street, Moline, Illinois, six one two six five, parcel one seven zero nine four one zero zero one six. And that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
All right. I don't believe we have any more public comment this evening. So miscellaneous business, I've already clarified the procedure for Chapter Four, we're, that we're gonna clarify that for our license holders. Don't believe I had anything else, although just an alert that many of us are participating on a panel and in conversation with representatives from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development tomorrow, so commending staff for putting this all together and leading us through that discussion. I, I have a sense from the, this, that affordable housing is another top priority for this council, and so I'm glad we're having these larger discussions. That's all I have. Mr. Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Macias, sorry.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Went.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer.
I have one. This one's actually, this one's actually from my wife. She's clocking in after three and a half years, so. She wanted to express some, just a personal thing. She, she was a, she come upon an accident, or not an accident, but a, a resident that was in distress on Forty-first Street near, near the library in front of Dr. Larson's office, I believe, and Heather Ritchie had come out, and they were helping this, this lady, and, and I, I think through the whole process, she sent me this long note. The, the nine-one-one operator was extremely helpful, the, the police got there and helped with some traffic control issues and the fire department, and just the way they handled the whole situation, the way they helped the, the elderly resident who was having some health issues and so forth. And she just wanted to express her greatest appreciation for our emergency responders who handled that incident and how they, how they handled it. So, kudos.
Thank you.
A neighborhood meeting last weekend in my neighborhood, which I did not attend because my niece decided to get married on the same night, which kind of worked out. Unanimously, the, the folks that live above McKinley Park, there's a Freudian slip, would like to see it turned into a park. That's one of the things that came out of the meeting. Usually the, the typical things, they want their streets fixed, like everybody at Everybody Neighborhood Watch Meeting, they talked about they want their street fixed. But that came out of the meeting, that pretty unanimously, that they, that would be a good use for that piece of property. Another thing that came up that I, I guess I better check to take it to Traffic Committee. We want, the stop signs below the hill are notoriously being run by people because people that aren't, that come over from Iowa, they don't know they're supposed to stop for people coming down the hill. And so I sent an email off to, I think they met today, so I'm gonna have to wait till next time. We'd like to see some kind of light or something on the, just to get people's attention so they stop, because a lot of people blow through that. But having said that, there's a stoplight that's approximately, well, it's by the new liquor store down there. You can tell by downtown by the liquor stores, and like, you know, that liquor store, the one that's closest where the traffic light is, people blow through that one all the time too. But hopefully, if you get some kind of lighting, maybe people will notice that stop signs there. Thank you, that's all I have. We have that on like Ten Street and Twelfth Avenue, it's helped. Yeah, makes a difference.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. Can I clarify where he thought the lighted stop sign should be exactly?
Yeah, do you have the address for that?
It would be Fifth Avenue and Forty-third Street.
Thank you.
Fifth and Forty-third.
Mr. Waldron.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas and Mr. Dykis.
As, as long as Alderman O'Brien has, has brought up McKinley School, as you know, we, we acquired that after many, many years. We have secured the building, boarded it up, and we're at that juncture now where we are looking for our cues to determine what the cost would be to remove all of the contents, all matters of contents that are in the building, which are significant. And having people come in and actually do it, leaving, leaving the building basically in a physical condition where we could bring people into it to look at it as a potential redevelopment of the building or reuse. We haven't had a neighborhood meeting that, that I've attended since the one that we had originally when it was still owned by the former property owners. And it really begs the question, where do we go with it? I mean, do, it's a six-acre parcel of land, you know, all overgrown for the most part, except for the section that's immediately at the school. And, you know, there's been suggestions of leaving it all green space and perhaps turning it into some type of a park. And then there's been suggestions that it be converted to some form of residential. So I'm just curious, I mean, if there's any direction from council, you don't have to give it to me right now, but if you have ideas or thoughts, concerns, I mean, I'd certainly like to hear them before we start spending any more money, right? I don't want to spend any more than what it costs to board it up right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you.
No, Your Honor.
Can I have a quick question about?
Yeah.
And I was kind of, last week, we kind of went through those numbers and said yes, no, yes, you know. Could you guys send out what, because I wasn't taking a, a good tally. I know that was something that you guys said you should send out.
I think that was gonna come back when she brings the budget stuff back in a week or two from now.
And, and I know that's what they said, but I think we also said, well, can we just kind of see what?
You want to sneak peek of what you guys actually kind of agreed to?
What we chatted down to.
Well, just because if there was something that was, oh, that's not how I remember, that we get that before we?
We'll circulate that. Is Carol listening in or is she not?
Yes, she is.
Okay, Carol, you got it. So we will circulate it tomorrow, we, we finish that rather quickly.
Yeah, I figured it'd be easy.
Yeah, no, it's the next day.
All right, executive session.
Oh, Barry, did Barry get his?
I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. I don't have anything, Your Honor, thank you.
Correct. Just let it, no, okay, go for it.
Very quiet. Your Honor, I make the motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven.